Okay. Meeting now be called to order and before we have our public hearing, I just want to make everybody aware. We have an officer here. After several calls from several people during one or more of the planning commission hearing, I asked the sheriff to look at the cameras and see if what was said was, you know, fact and sure enough, he recommended bringing a deputy in tonight. So, thank you for being here, sir. And we're gonna hold it civil. Anybody doesn't, you know, want to agree with it, you'll be asked to leave and I don't know how to further explain it, but. First on the public hearings is John Mass special use permit request. Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 15, 2024, 6:00 PM in the general district courtroom of the Lee County Courthouse located in Johnville, Virginia to solicit input on a special use permit request. John Mass has applied for a special use permit to allow construction equipment and/or farm implement, sales, rental, service, repair business, but not including junkyard or automobile graveyards and provided that no repair vehicle shall be conducted outside of completely enclosed building and in view from any adjacent property or public street. The property consists of plus or minus .532 acres and is located in an A1 agricultural district at 208 Boons Path Road, tax parcel number 66-1-3. You want to come up first?
Mr. Mass did actually come into our office to pull a permit as a farm structure for his own personal use. Once it become apparent to him that the community had reached out to him to do work on other vehicles and it was going to turn into a business, he contacted us about the need for a special use and actually run the building through as a, with a building permit instead of as a farm structure. So, he come to us looking to apply for this. He is just looking to do repair work, essentially repair work on farm equipment, construction equipment, things of that nature. At the planning commission hearing, it was by the chance we recommend approval for the special use.
Anybody got any questions for Clint? Okay, we have anybody on behalf of that? Special use permit? Is it for or again?
I, would you come up here and speak?
Yes, you need to come forward and anybody, sorry I didn't make myself clear totally on my introduction, but when you come up to, you'll have three minutes to speak and...
Yeah, I'm John Mass, a little bit quiet and yeah, Clint stated very clearly, you know, the original, the original plan was for basically just a farm use, personal use structure and then people started asking about work on their tractors and the other equipment. I realize that, you know, this could very well turn into a more of a business and up here well better, you know, give a plan than that necessarily applying the special use permit. So, yeah, other than that, although I think Clint covered pretty good, so.
Any questions for, for...
Motion to approve.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve.
Sure.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Ah.
Any vote? Okay, next we got Robert Yoder's special use permit request. Lee County Court Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 15, 2024, 6:00 PM in the general district courtroom of Lee County Courthouse located in Johnville, Virginia to solicit input on a special use permit request. Robert Yoder has applied for a special use permit to allow cutting and selling of firewood in an A1 agricultural district. The property is located at 849 Flatwoods Road and consists of plus or minus 34 acres of land, tax parcel number 68-8-63.
It's Mr. Yoder calling Mass wanting to be required. This was something that I myself was unaware was in the zoning ordinance that we had to have a special use for the processing, cutting and selling of firewood. Upon going out and meeting with Mr. Yoder, he is talking about a rather extensive operation within the business model. He isn't, it's not just what you think of someone selling firewood, but he, he does have a tree trimming, tree service business. He will be handling a lot of the lumber coming in and out as firewood in this process. But he has applied for a special use. Planning Commission did both, it was unanimous to recommend approval.
Any questions from board or to Clint? Okay, anybody on that behalf? Okay. Any movement on that?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, you got a motion to approve.
Sure.
And a second, all in favor?
Ah.
Any vote? Okay, next is Carolyn Razor's special use permit request. The Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 15, 24, 6:00 PM in the general district courtroom of the Lee County Courthouse located in Johnville, Virginia to solicit input on a special use permit request. Carolyn Razor has applied for a special use permit to allow an event venue in an A1 agricultural district. The property is located south of 527 Old Woodway Road and consists of plus or minus 8.3 acres of land, tax parcel number 26-3-3.
As you each know, the event venue is a relatively defined term in the zoning ordinance. Mr. Razor had been in contact with Mr. Poe, the previous administrator, for several months discussing what steps needed to be taken for the venture that she's looking at doing. Once the event venue become, once we pass the zoning tax amendment to add that to the ordinance, glad it might for the special use to do a wedding venue. There was some discussion, I'm sure there will be members here that'll want to discuss in further detail, some of the things that was brought up in the planning commissions. There will be, there is an issue with the entrance, some debate over the access to the property. I spoke with Ms. Muncie and her advised me that it would be a civil matter between the door about those issues. The planning commission, Mr. Bledsoe's opinion was, he made the motion, ultimately it was unanimous to recommend approval for this event venue, but essentially his stance at the planning commission was in determining whether or not this is something that's harmonious with that location in the zoning. That was something we felt should be approved. The other issues would be something that they might need to follow through and see if they're in civil court possibly, but as far as the zoning is concerned for the county, we're gonna see an issue through our reception in that area and ultimately it was unanimous. So, we recommend approval.
Okay, anybody got any questions for Clint? The planning commission has no say so in railways and all the above.
That's not anything we have in jurisdiction of them.
Is there a clarification?
I know based off of the GIS map and what the county uses, it appears to be a railway that was the way we approached it when this was first applied for. I don't know if Mr. Razor, Mr. or Miss Razor or Mr. or Miss Hale can shed any further light on that tonight and for a couple comments?
Okay. Anybody on this behalf?
I'm Carolyn Razor and I've been working on this for about a year now and, and in February, well, I started a year ago just researching and getting some information and about event venues and this is something I'm going to do for a while. I began working with Becky O'Quinn, she is a small business advisor at the Duffield Funding Center and she's through Mount Lehigh College. And so, after I'm going to do the research, she advised me to go ahead and kind of pursue, we did the research, I actually have the research here. I've developed a business plan, I did live in March. Also have developed a five-year cash flow projection if y'all want to see it. We've applied for the, because I believe, of course, the special use permit. If we do get approval, the event venue is for, we can use it for weddings and like birthday parties, showers, family reunion, holiday events. It's not going to be used for alcohol distribution. We won't be repairing or selling our own food, like if a caterer takes in, they'll have their own food license. So, also I just want to remind you, we are lifelong residents of Lee County. I'm a teacher in Lee County, Don, his family has lived here. The land we want to put in on, his family has owned it for 40 years, along with the road that leads up to. I have pictures, even if you Google it, the road will highlight, it goes right to our track, very intact, all land. We have deeds that say that we own it, if you want to see on your hand. If you want to see my, my business plan, I have a picture of similar what the barns to look like. We know that, yes, some explain this is, we're, we will have to hire an engineer. So, we have that in the plan. All the steps will be taken the right way, done with the codes and standards for the county, for the building inspector, water and soil inspector. But like I said, if there, we have everything in order, if you want to see it.
Does anybody need to say anything?
Or if you want me to bring...
Is the stuff we have...
You have everything that was presented whenever the permit was asked for and what was in their packet.
I don't know if I presented all that. I didn't, I think when I applied for the permit that I needed all that at the time, but I did have it at this time. If you'd like me to present it to you, I can show it to you.
You can, yeah.
That's my business plan. I want, I think the picture I have is a similar picture of what the barns still look like. And this is my research that I've done. Between 22, 23, 24, I have researched the wedding venues and that we plan to, our equipment and things that we can buy, materials to deal, we plan on trying to keep it in the county and try to buy as much as we can so we can give back to our county. We, I mean, we plan on, we will do retirement and living the rest of our lives. So, it's a retirement plan that we can do together.
I think... Everybody's biggest concern is just the conflict. I don't think anybody has a problem.
If I have the deed and the map to show you that we own the land, if you want to, it shouldn't be a, I mean, I mean, if there is a conflict, I mean, we don't have to say nothing for it. I mean, the entrance doesn't really have anything to do with the building itself. But if you want to see the deed, I can bring it to you and I can show you the map. Would you like me to get the deed?
No, not at this time. It wouldn't mean anything to me without, without a lawyer present.
Right.
It just may, may waste of your time.
Do you need this research?
Huh?
Do you need this research package?
Uh, no. I don't doubt you've done some research and it's good.
So, that's all I have.
Anybody got any questions? Of course, you sit down, anybody got a question?
How soon you decide start on this?
Well, it's from the ground up, so when we get approval, I've actually had some estimates down on materials and stuff like that, so just as soon as John's foot deals. Cause he, he'll be getting the graveyard and stuff. And of course, we have to get the permits to get started, so. Projection time would be sometime next, probably like seven or nine.
So, wedding venue is going to be, don't tell them how many people is going to be there, correct? And is it back to Clint, is there a, where does numbers follow into this equation?
I've not seen a set of blueprints yet for the structure, what she's talking about would be an assembly, occupancy, it would be up to the architect or designer of the structure to figure the occupant load, but it would be based on the square footage of the structure and...
The barn's 2,000 per day.
I'm sure it's going to be depend on how many cousins comes, correct?
Correct. There would be an occupant load which the building will be constructed, total design for handle.
The only thing I have this, I've talked with, you know, the gentleman back there to, I just hate to see neighbors, but that's my biggest complaint and I've dealt with stuff like that and it just tires up your whole day. And I hope that when this is all said and done, that you all can, can leave as friends. That's just my hope.
May I say something? We have been friends with the Hells since they came. They've had dinner at our house. We've, I've had perfect things before and she had surgery on her hand. We've always been friends. And the thing is, it wasn't that they've used our road for almost nine years and it wasn't that we weren't wanting them to continue to use the road, but they don't want us to be able to use our own road to our own land. And about six months ago, John went to Lonnie and told him, we're gonna have to open, you know, what he's planned, we're gonna have to open the gates and open the road because we have plans that starts opening up on our land. And then later, when it was addressed here at the meeting, then Mr. Hale, Lonnie said to John, well, I thought you would just forget about it. We still plan on being neighbors and being, we were trying to handle it the right way. John has offered to help him get water to the other side of his land for his animals. The problem is, our road goes up, he owns land on those sides, but it doesn't necessarily, he thinks he owns the road because of the land on his side. The thing is, we're just wanting to use our road to get to our, to our property.
Well, I've not been up there and I'm, I'm bumfuzzled at this. I was at the auction up there, but how did, how did, how does he end up with land on both sides of the road?
Because it's so important.
It's been railways.
And the road is already out years ago.
So, the road was never owned you all, correct?
The road belongs to the land behind it. Owns 75 acres behind it and the, it's in the deed, it says the road belongs to the 75 acres.
Let me clarify one thing right quick before everybody gets all out of hand.
Oh, I...
The only reason we're preventing him to speak from back here is because he is...
Exactly.
Because if you don't, gee, you know, everything just gets all out of hand, nobody hears anything and nobody accomplishes anything. So, that, I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that he has, he has, he's old crutches and he can't take it right back and forth if I ever answer a question, so. So, the road really is a, it's a right of way to property on up in the ridge behind both of you all?
Well, if you read the deed, it says belongs to, belongs to...
Mr. Hale has got a, a right of way for the east property. East property, it says in his deed. He has got a right of way to the east property.
It doesn't say nothing about the west property.
That's just not his barn time, but the thing is, we weren't, we weren't, we weren't going to have any issues. He doesn't want us to use our road. The issue came up when he told us, he doesn't want people driving up and down his road, or his road, which is actually our road, but the thing is, he was worried that people are gonna mess with his personal property. He has festivals at his house two times a year and they have probably in two days, 800 to 1,000 people probably that show up.
I don't know.
A lot. And they're walking around his barn. They could pick up his personal items and carry them off. We're only wanting to use our road for people to drive up to our barn to a venue. They're not gonna be stopping and messing with his things, but yet he has...
So, am I wrong in asking this is a dispute about the right of way?
We don't have a dispute. We just wanted to him to open the gates. We've let him use it right.
But...
He has a problem, we don't. We were gonna continue...
It's about the right of way, is that right?
Not on our behalf. We were gonna let him continue to use it and he's...
He, he is running animals from his barn on the west side to the east side. So, he's got panels and gates on a, he's got a 12-foot gate on a 20-foot right of way.
I mean, obviously, we don't decide, that's a court matter. It sounds like it's all a court matter to me. We're just deciding if, if the wedding venue gets to be there or not. And I don't think nobody up here is against people trying to do business in Lee County.
Well, the thing is, they're not opposition with us using, continuing to use the road at all. The opposition, he, he's the one that has the problem. We don't. We were gonna continue to, and we even come along the weekends, we, we don't have a wedding or an event, you can close your gates up and let your animals...
No, John did not say that. No. He wants the gates open.
Listen, you don't speak unless you're spoken to, but, and he is the only one that I've permitted to speak.
But we have, we have been willing to, to work with them and that's not what Lonnie wants to do, cause he thinks that because the road runs between his land, you have to read the deeds and you have to go back and you have to research it, so.
You know, just from a standpoint, but just from a current point, the other board members can, can, can pitch in or whatever. You know, I think we're all about...
I just want an approval to build my venue. I have been working on this, I want to use it, when I retire, I want to use it to do back-to-school events for kids. We don't have very many things in our county for kids, we don't. I want to use it in summers to do like maybe family night, to come and let them play games, do different things. I just want to open my venue.
I understand that and I totally agree that we need, we need those in, in the county. My thing is, you know, there again, it, it, it goes back to just, can't we just figure out a way, you know, without somebody's feelings being hurt, you know? It's all about people's feelings being hurt over something, but it seems like it, that it would be great for both of you all. In my mind, you all could come together and have some joint venture, but you also got to come together and figure out, get that solution taken care of, I mean, I, I don't like being put in this spot, cause I guess in a way, you're both right.
Well, it's not on our part. We, 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 not mine that I used the road, it was, he, Lonnie's the one that wants to settle it in court. So, I'm just here to see if I can get my venue upraised. If you agree with it and...
Last time I talked to Mr. Hale about it, and I got a witness, man worked at Hale's many, I told him, I said, I've tried this is the third time, I'll give you opportunity. If you want to try to settle this right here, we figure something out, we can. I did, I said, we can sit here and figure this, figure this out right now. I said, you went to all the neighbors, you went to Farm Service Office and all these other people, but you didn't come to me. But I, I'll give you opportunity right here, we'll figure it out and get by this. He said, no. And I got a witness.
The opposition, the opposition, and at the last, at the zoning meeting, Lonnie did not say he opposes us putting the venue and he just opposes us using our own road.
Mr. Chairman, correctly if I'm wrong, but we're here to determine whether they can build this event venue on the piece of property.
Right.
And whatever the problem is between them and their neighbor about the right of way needs to be resolved in court through the lawyers or whatever, so I think we've heard enough about the right of way.
Well, we, yeah, they're siding. Yeah, thank you.
I'm Lonnie Hale and we're neighbors, as Carolyn said, and she's 100% right. We've been good neighbors for nine years, never had a cross word, never had any problems. We've worked together on issues, no problems at all. And she's, she's 100% correct too. I'm not opposed to the venue, I think it'd be a fantastic thing for the community. I think if we could get past the right of way issue, that we could probably work together. I mean, like she said, we have kids come and we have a festival for, for the community and we do that for the community. And there's nothing for little kids to do, like she said. And so, they come out and we have a fun day of feeding the animals and, you know, making a pizza and a hot dog and it's, it's great for everybody. It's not a business for us. I mean, if I can make enough to break even, man, I'll tickle the death. So, that, that part, I agree with that, you know, I don't have a problem with the venue itself. The road is definitely a problem. You know, John and I have been trying to coexist on this situation for nine years. We didn't have a, not a cross word ever. Neighbors, we've been neighbors, he's defended us on things, we've defended him on things, but we just can't get past the right of way issue. There's several issues I have and we filed a lawsuit, it will be in court. I don't know if everybody was served to date to, you know, on the court matter, but we can't resolve it. You know, John and I have talked about it, he wants no gates. I want to keep my gates that I've had since I, since I got there to run my animals from one side of the pasture to the, one property to the other. The barn sits kind of on the, the west side. So, I, I can't, I can't be locked out or shut out of my property to the, you know, and there's, you know, toward the east on their side. You know, to do what he wants to do, to tear out all the gates, to have an open, open right of way, I'd have to build another barn or a structure, some kind of shelter over there from the animals. And it just doesn't make any sense. I mean, it's worked for nine years and now it's a problem. The road that he's referring to, I've got, if anybody wants to see it, I know it's not a court law, but I, I can show you on Google Earth, the road hasn't been used in 20 years. I mean, John came to me one time last year and says, I can't get my corn wagon and my, my tractor up my road, it's been washed out, it's rough. Would it be our use of the road? I said, yeah, man, no problem. When I'm putting animals away, open the gates, he used it, did what he needed to do, we closed the gates back, everybody's happy. So, we can work together, we've done it before, but at this point, we can't agree on the road situation. So, we, I had really no choice but to get a lawyer to work it out and see if we can kind of get a resolution. And I'll tell you, I mean, I haven't had any sleep in a month. I mean, I'm just, I'm sick over the whole thing because he, I, I close the gates, he opens the gates. I close the gates, he opens the gates. He tears my gate post down, we call the police, the police come up there, it's a civil issue, y'all need to work it out. I'm not a violent person, I'm not, I've never resorted to violence, I've never had any issue with somebody in any physical operations and I'm not gonna, it'll never get to that point, but I'm not gonna stand in the road and argue with him and fight with him. And, you know, we have a festival where you've got several hundred people with kids running up the road, they're having a big time, they're playing and... And John comes down the road on his tractor. He comes right down through the middle of the festival on his tractor for no reason. And, and it just, it's just, it's the tit-for-tat thing. I just don't, I can't, I just can't function like that. So, you know, well, like you said, it's, it's, the court will handle it, and whatever decision is made, we'll live with it, and we'll, and we'll move forward. But I'm not opposed to the venue. I think it's a great idea.
And realize that's all we're gonna be voting on.
Yeah.
The venue is either a go or not.
Yeah.
The rest of it, we really can't even comment a whole lot about.
Right. So, so like I say, all I ask is maybe we delay the decision for thirty days until we can get this through.
I don't think they would mind that that happened either. But I, nobody is against no venue at all, I think, so...
So that's all I have to say. I mean, like I say, I don't wanna be having some, I mean, we moved here for peace and quiet. We, it's, it's been great.
I live on my own half of, of gravel road that we have to take care of, the, the community there. They sell houses on it.
Yep.
Four of them are little women, and it can be fun. Right of ways, we have to all share it. And, you know, hurricane comes, it's full of trees. Well, that's your tree. No, that's your tree.
Yeah.
Guess what? We gotta move it regardless.
Yeah, absolutely.
But we all, I had fun with them before over some stuff. I mean, it happens, but that's what the court system's for more than anything, I guess.
Absolutely. And I think we'll, like I say, I mean, it'll get worked out one way or the other. I just, like I said, I don't wanna be like Mr. Leonard said. We need to be neighbors. We need to help each other and be, be good people. Right now, I just feel like I've just been constantly harassed since the planning commission meeting, and I hadn't had a minute's sleep. And I just, I can't live with that. So I don't have any choice but to defend it. And I, I don't have thousands of dollars to feed the lawyers, because the only person that wins is a lawyer. I mean, he's making his money. And I'll make say, I'm, well, I'm a working man like everybody in here. I don't have money just to throw away.
I'm not interrupting, but it sounds like a simple interpretation of the language.
So I'm sure, well, sure we get worked out, but, you know, right now, there's no, there's no solution to be had between the two of us. So we'll just have to, you know, if we could delay it for thirty days and make a decision, maybe by then we'd have the court make a ruling on it. Like we do.
I'm ready y'all pull in the vote on tonight.
Thank you.
Ms. Lynn, can I have a second?
Do you have anything yet? Do you have, your wife, does she have anything?
No.
Okay, does anybody else have anything? Let everybody have a chance to talk. Anybody else? Okay, we'll give you another couple seconds. Well, not too much more. We got, we got, we got a lot, we got time here.
So John and I had actually talked about this. It, and whatever is decided in court will be decided. And it's not gonna make a difference to us being neighbors. We're neighbors regardless, and we'll continue to try to get rid of this with showing some integrity and respect. So, you know, we're not out talking with everybody trying to say this happened or that happened. You know, it's on a need-to-know basis. But whenever the court decides, I, I would rather you all go ahead and decide with this tonight.
Well, let me ask you something, just, why would it have to be decided tonight? Because you know, there's five of us up here, and all five of us are in favor of the venue, but why, just give me, just give me one reason why it has to be decided tonight.
I'm against it, but...
I mean, but it isn't, I mean, I, it probably isn't for you, or what it has to be.
It is for them.
But there's gotta be some reason behind it, I mean. Can you tell me what?
We wanna move forward, get things moving.
But you can still move forward with a lot, with what you're needing. All you're needing is get estimates and stuff like that. I mean, that's not gonna slow you down, because we've already all sat here in front of everybody and said, we're for the venue. We're, we definitely are.
Let me ask you this, what, what would make a difference about it?
And it may not. I just wanted, I just wanted an answer. I didn't get one.
We, we wanna move forward. We, we've been planning this for a long time.
We wanna move forward. Kind of like, and, and not that I'm trying to get the court before the court's at law. And that's my business advice. I've already, not in a business class, I've made everything for this venue, and it's...
Well, I understand, well, you know, eager to get going and all. I, I just, I, I just wanted to hear, I just wanted to hear some simple reason why it had to be decided.
Until it's approved, I can't apply for grants or any of that. Until it's approved, I can't apply for grants or any kind of...
Do, I'm sorry.
I said, until it's approved, I can't apply for grants or anything like that.
Oh, okay, I got you. Well, that's, that's, that's reasoning.
It's kind of time sensitive. It's like, there's actually a grant that I can apply for now, but I, but this hasn't been approved, so I...
Let me ask you this question. Okay, if you've done one ahead and done that, what would happen if the court decides against you all on this? What are you prepared to do? And you saying that you've done, got your, a few steps along the way. And I, I mean, what's your, what's your plan? Does that put an end to it, if you lose this on that road? Or, I mean, that's something really to think about, look at it. If you go to the court system...
Is there a plan B?
Yeah, there's, there's a plan B, but there's no way of losing it on the road. It's just working out details on how we're gonna use the road.
The thing is, the road will still be, the road will still be, I mean, if it's a right of way, and even if the court's decided it's a right of way, or the hell, it's a other way, it can't be blocked. You can't walk a, a, a right of way to begin with, so...
Well, you've got other land available to build a road.
If I sold the land tomorrow, if I sold this piece of land tomorrow, that's the only right of way to it. If I sold seventy-five acres tomorrow, that's the only road to it.
That's why...
And I think in state Virginia, you can't, you cannot landlot nobody.
That's why the, the road belongs to the...
We don't have a lawyer present here, so, you know, we, we can't speak for our...
So it's kind of time sensitive, because not as my business advisor, there's some grants that I can apply for, but the deadline's coming up, so thirty days is gonna knock me out of that. So, but anyways, what I came up to say is, regardless of what's decided in court, if they decide that they get the road and we don't, well, that's what's decided. So whatever is final, the court will be final. I'm not gonna, not continue to be their neighbor. If they needed something, we'll still be their neighbor. I just wanna say that.
Okay.
And look, to kind of further expand on your, your question, they've got many options. To continue to push to use this right of way, I was gonna let it go, but there are certain problems with the right of way. Okay, this right here. This, this is my, my, my property here. Now, the, the road in question runs right, split the middle of the property. And once you get to the end of the right of way, where, where my property and the rest of his property, the line, you open that gate, there's a twenty-foot cave that just drops right straight down. So to even get through that right of way, you've gotta make a hard left turn to drive around that cave entrance. It's a vertical cave, you go straight down. So there's gonna be a huge issue getting any kind of traffic through that gate without disturbing that cave. So that's, that's a big concern with somebody driving into it, maybe damaging the cave. All order comes off the lovely gap, goes through that cave.
Right.
Now, it's gotten stopped up before. John and I've worked together. We cleared the debris out of it. Everything's great, no problems. But I don't understand why we would wanna use a, a farm road. It's, it's a farm road. I mean, there's never been a house here, there's never been anything but a barn. And it was used twenty years ago, and all of it was back to nineteen twenty-five. That, John's right, it used to be landlocked. Other people owned that property. His dad bought this land, now it's not landlocked. They could build a road on their own property, right straight to Woodway. I've offered to pay to move the water line off that property so they could have a straight shot to the road. And John basically said, I'm not doing that. So if you're welcome to look at it, if you'd like.
I think we're good at that. Like I say, that's, that's gonna come up as part of the civil matter itself, so there's nothing we can do about that. So we're wasting our time, as you're talking about.
I understand. So like you say, there's more to it than just we're fighting over the road.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of concerns.
Well, like I say, we can all agree that we're, we're all in favor of the venue. We just, you know, that's just something y'all are gonna have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, hearing done. Gary's moving on this.
You got anyone?
Do you want to vote on it now, or you want to... Sure, I'll vote on it now, and just get it out of the way. After you, I'm on this. Go ahead, John.
I'll make a motion to approve it and let them fight it out in court, how they gonna get there.
Okay.
Before you've got no bearing on right of ways or nothing else.
Okay, got a motion, got a second. I'd like to have a little further discussion, if you possibly, later on. Okay. It should have to be an open session. It's gotta be an open session, so if you wanna discuss a plan on this, yeah. Out of all fairness, I mean, table this for thirty days ain't the end of the world. I mean, it might be. It ain't gonna change the outcome of the court matter. What we do here is no bearing on the whole mess, but I'd like to see you work it out. Sounds like you will one way or the other.
Well, they, they've got a plan, plan B, correct? And if they can move forward with the, the rest of their stuff, it'll be, we know how plans get broken out of the court system. It could take a lot longer than thirty days.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have a problem voting on it, because like I say, it's, it's gonna be, that difference is gonna be settled in court. It ain't gonna have nothing to do with what, you know, that we're approving the venue. Or they're, they're wanna go, they're gonna go through with it regardless, I mean, so...
It could possibly take months, to get the court thing appropriated, same as I said. The venue's a great idea. I think it's great for everything. It's just a, an issue of the roadway dispute. But like I said, that's, that's on us, it's just the, there's a... But if there, any, like you said, there is, there is a plan B, as far as access and everything like this. So we approve of that, and if it doesn't go our place, it'll work together.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the venue, while he's at it. I'll second. Okay, got a motion and a second. Hall of favor? Any opposed? And I will add this, that for the betterment of Lee County, let's work this thing out. It ain't no big deal that, that you all can work something out, really. Hopefully, it'll get, taken care of, and you all can continue with what you need to do. Appreciate you all, both parties. Okay, next we got, next we got Gary and Tammy Williams' special use permit request. Lee County Board of Suitors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, six P.M. in the General District Court Room, the Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia, to solicit input on a special use permit request. Gary and Tammy Williams have applied for a special use permit to allow automobile salvage yard and/or automobile graveyard in an A-one agricultural district. The property is located at nineteen thirty-six Hickory Flash Road and consists of plus or minus four point six oh acres of land. Tax parcel number thirty-seven dash A dash one thirteen.
This special use come about due to a complaint that was received through the administrative office. Mr. Poe, at the time, brought the complaint to me. I wanted to look at the situation. By definition, in the ordinance, any area outside of a completely enclosed building used for the storage, keeping, or parking of two or more motor vehicles in any kind incapable being operated or not economically practical to make operative constitutes an automobile graveyard. Upon looking at the complaint, it was determined that Mr. Williams did have multiple vehicles that were not economically feasible. There's also some overlap there with our ordinances with litter control. Mr. Porter has gone out and looked at it, and I believe he was just waiting to see kind of how we work this out for his own before he progressed with anything later. This was not something that we went looking for. This was a complaint that we had to address once the complaint was made. I did note if Mr. Williams was a certified area that was in violation of ordinance, and gave him the option of removing the vehicles from the dock to the, or to buy to the special use. As I stated in the planning commission meeting, there was actually a third option that I did not state in the letter, in which he could have them all in a fully enclosed building. If he put them in a structure that would then not constitute an automobile graveyard. So Mr. Williams had, and I don't know if he's hearing or speaking on this, but he had been cleaning up some of the dockery for some other issues. And he had stated that he would move the vehicles back, but once all this got blown out and started this process, that he wasn't coming to move them until this, until we resolved this issue. There was discussion throughout the planning commission meeting, a lot of complaints, a lot of people take issue with it. There was a lot of concern about, within the zoning ordinance, there is no requirement for screening in the A-one district for automobile graveyard or salvage yard. That if this special use was to be passed, you would have the option to add stipulations to require screening. And we heard that a lot throughout that meeting that night, was, you know, if this was to be passed, you know, they would want a fence where this would not be visible from the cemetery. But still, most people are opposed to it. I know Mr. Williams stated during the planning commission meeting that he has planted some shrubs, trees, things like that, sure that will take time, but will eventually hopefully make some of a screening. Ultimately, through the discussion of the public and the board members, there was a debate of that two or more vehicles act to apply to a lot of different properties in this county.
What's the ordinance say?
The ordinance is two or more. The, I talked to Ms. Muncie a little bit about this. I believe state code defines it as five or more. So our ordinance is actually more restrictive in the state. So there was some discussion at the planning commission meeting about possibly doing a, I mean, to lessen some of the restrictions. But nothing has been, no action's been taken at this point through the planning board, through speaking with the board, to change anything at this moment. So as it stands, two or more vehicles would constitute an automobile graveyard.
And you say the state, uh, deals five?
I believe so. I, I know Ms. Muncie said she would look into it. From what I could find researching, it was five or more, and it actually states that as if they're housed not in the weather, or not exposed to the weather, or it says within a completely enclosed building. So we have, at whatever point, if that was the original, if the original zoning, our ordinance is a little more restrictive. But localities are allowed to go stricter, we're just not allowed to go less restrictive. So one thing that was asked was if he just moved these away from the cemetery, would that be all right? Because everybody's complaining, concerned as being able to see these from the view of the cemetery. Ultimately, if these vehicles are left on the property, it's still being in violation of the zoning ordinance as the state is, without something being changed. So this was a situation that was a very hot topic, lasted for quite some time. I don't know how many people have spoken tonight over it.
So who's, I mean, I'm, I know why I'm voting on this, but I'm, I'm willing to. Who, who decided to fit it, John, we get one?
Some of the things have gone done, some of that gets, and like I say, some of the hours ordinances that he enforces as well, but...
I mean, having decided it's a job we get, well...
If it's not tagged, it's...
That's the kicker, right there.
Yes.
Well, there, there's other things with that. You've got whether it's tagged, whether it has a valid inspection sticker. Uh, there's, there are several things that go along with that that's defined in the code of what is a vehicle that is not operable. And it doesn't say that it's derelict or whatever, it's, it's non-operable.
And it doesn't say that it's derelict or whatever. It's non-operable. So...
So...
In Johnland Town down here, there's a huge junkyard on the side of the highway. What's he operating now?
West Jonesville. So there are properties throughout the county that were in existence prior to the ordinance taking effect. Ordinance took effect, I believe, in late ninety-three or early ninety-four, being enforced through the county. Anything that was in place prior to that would be grandfathered in. There are efforts being made that if it has expanded its footprint of where it stood at the enactment of zoning, trying to bring some things to the compliance.
Right. And we've doubled this in District One. We're still dealing with it, and it's actually next to a graveyard.
Yes.
I'm anxious to see. But again, you can't walk up and say that's junk. You gotta get out of here. That's not your call or our call either. It's, it's, we need real clear guidelines there. We ain't got them.
There are definitions of that in the code.
In our ordinance, so I'm saying if you're gonna kick down the two to three vehicles. I've got four myself. Obviously they're tagged, but I got kids driving them, but who gets to decide what?
Well, like I say, again, in that code, it defines what, what is a operable vehicle.
Okay.
And it has to have valid tags. It has to have an inspection sticker. You know, it has to have an operating exhaust system. I mean, basically, it's not operable if you couldn't get on the road with it and drive by a state trooper and him not stop you and pull it off the road, basically. And it's pretty well defined. There's another thing in there too, just to throw this out there as far as how you get them out of view. Putting a tarp over top of them is not sufficient under our's opinions.
Yeah, yeah.
One other comment that was made during the planning commission meeting that I think is relevant, as long as, was any special use that is ground goes with that property. So if it is settled, the next property owner still has that special use. So a lot of this gets into, Mr. Williams is not really looking to have an automobile salvage yard or a business. Maybe this is vehicles that he has there that are personal vehicles to him. But if something was to happen to him and someone else wanted to buy that property, if this was approved, it could carry and be used for such in the future.
Is those vehicles tagged?
Well, and one of the reasons that a lot of people are throwing these things up is for lack of taking care of that problem as we just discussed in our own foreline. Yeah, it's been dealt with since I've been on board. It's just my ninth year and it hasn't been taken care of yet, so.
I know the county's had discussions.
That gives people every reason in the world if they could do stuff like that because...
It makes my job and Allen's, Porter's job harder because that is what's thrown up at you. Is if the county's not gonna take care of this, why should we act to comply?
Absolutely.
We're operating under ordinance from nineteen ninety-three, too. We need to update.
Need to update.
Need to update.
But regardless, for those that don't know, I think we all know that that's out of the grandfather footprint.
Yes.
He has been contacted about that too, and there has been some concessions made. I'm not sure exactly where we are with that, but we are, we are working on that.
We are working first, trying to get that handled without having to take it to court.
And the sooner it gets resolved, the better for all of them.
Great.
Okay. Anybody got any questions on that? If you have. Okay, anybody wants to come up and speak on that, either?
Good evening. I'm Eve Bowen from Jonesville, Virginia. I'm here in opposition to reigning Gary and Tammy Williams' special use permit to allow a quote automobile salvage yard and/or automobile graveyard, end quote. In other words, a junkyard. And when you have got numerous vehicles sitting in a field next to the cemetery, rested, no engine, no hood, they are definitely not drivable. And they are sitting right beside the cemetery. I have many family members and friends buried in the cemetery and I'm a plotter myself. I hate to see this eyesore every time I go, and I'm sure everybody else does too. There are approximately nine thousand graves in that cemetery, and that does not include the ones that are available or sold. I do not, if you do approve this quick request, there should be a stipulation that a privacy fence at least eight feet high be installed to protect the beauty and serenity of the cemetery. And Mr. Ms. Williams given a time limit, maybe sixty days, to get the fence installed. Thank you for your time.
Checks, do them. It's always a small business. If, if they're gonna give him a hard time, why are they not gonna give everybody a hard time over junk cars? Right?
Well, I think we're doing our best to do this. These people are going out and...
I, I know. But this has been on and on and on and on with him. But don't he have the same to come back after the county if they force him to do this? Because y'all weren't making everybody that has junk cars in their yard fence them up?
Well, they're in the process of doing that. People that, that, that are permitted to do that are supposed to be having those.
The stuff on the foreline y'all was talking about, there's stuff up here on the foreline. Hoggie don't have no fence up over there.
Now, a lot of these people have been written up.
Right.
And, and a lot of it comes to right here, not to us.
Right.
Right here in this room, right here. And it goes no further, so we can't be responsible.
Right, I know, I know.
Our job is to try to get these people out, clean them out, and do what they're, do their job. There's not a person up here on this board that is against small business or have any personal reasons against anybody, not to have them anything, but there are right and wrong ways about going about things.
I get it. Same for everybody, though.
I agree with you. I, I listen.
That's the part that gets me is there are people that pick and choose, not y'all, the people in the county pick and choose who can have this and who can have that.
Right. Like I say, you know, we're all about business. I mean, that's how we generate money.
But they don't, nobody else wants it. The older the retired folks, they don't want it.
I assure you, there's probably not a person in Lee County who wants a junkyard at the side. Would you not agree with that? And, and it's not that, it's about...
I'm in the junk business. I can put thirty acres up behind my fence. I don't care.
But I'm just saying, property values and stuff like that, people put a lot of their life savings into their property. And they don't wanna junkyard it. But if it's done properly, you know, that's one thing. But if it's not done properly, that's a whole different story.
Right.
And you gotta go about these things, I mean, the right way. I, I don't know that this was done the right way. From what I gather, I, I mean, I went down there and looked. I haven't rode by there, and I don't think it was properly. Let's put it this way, if I was wanting to start your business, I wouldn't start it in that way. But I'm not a business owner, man, so.
I think Mr. Carter explained it pretty well, though, but nobody was out looking for this. It was...
Right, oh yeah, I know, I know that they wasn't looking for it. It's just that they keep hounding on him for, he's got four cars, four or five cars.
But we do have a similar situation that we're, we're in the same process of taking care of down on him.
Right, yeah, I remember.
Politically correctly, I can't say the lower end, but I guess the western end.
Yeah, I remember that.
We actually have four incidents that we're working on.
So it's not, it's not a sole, just not one person that's singled out. I mean, it may appear that way, but it's not, you know, and I could, I could, I could give you a little inside of thing, you know. And I've said this a lot of times, if more people would get involved in stuff like this, come to these meetings and see what goes on.
You came hiking or something?
That's right.
You came hiking? That's, that's gone down the street.
The only time, the only time, and I've said this a number of times since I've been on this board, the only time you'll get people to come and sit out there is when it involves them personally.
That's probably...
But if they would start coming, they would understand that there's more going on, you know, that's trying to get done than... And, and it does appear, maybe like you, it may appear that, you know, that somebody's not getting the right shape, fair shape, whatever. But I assure you, it's taught that way. Not from my end, I can tell you that, not from my end.
I don't think he's being singled out. I think that, like Clint said, that was a complaint. Clint had to do his job or Allen had to do their job. I mean, it's not anybody being singled out. I mean, Clint has a job to do, and he was called upon to do that. I mean, I don't think, I don't think anybody, well, anyway, I hope, hope I got it.
But I do appreciate you coming in and standing up for small business.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what, what I do. That's what a lot of people do.
That's what we're supposed to do.
That's right, same again.
We're supposed to have two sides to everything. We showed that tonight.
Mr., if I may?
You may.
During the meeting, when Mr. Williams was talking about that, this was not a business adventure that he said those...
Yeah, I know. He don't want it, but they're forcing him to have it pretty much, and that's where I was coming from. He don't want a junkyard, just like Mr. Haynes said in the meeting. We were all here for that meeting. He don't want that either because it borders his property. And if, you know, God forbid, something happens to him and somebody else winds up with it, they go to scrapyard. There, then what's the graveyard people gonna do? That's where I was going. Not that they're singling him out because he's got four junk cars in his yard, so be it, you know. But they're gonna push to something they really don't want, is what I meant, mean by it. And they're gonna get a lot more mess than what they already got.
Well, there again, that would have to come before the zoning content, before they do anything like that, so it's not a gimme. And I appreciate you coming up on that. There's two sides there. Who's next?
Thank you. My name is Cynthia Kinsler, and I own property adjacent, near this proposed site. And I also have some of Jerry's plots and have a lot of family members buried in Lee County Cemetery. I oppose this for a number of reasons. I oppose this special use permit, allowing an automobile graveyard. The application for this says automobile salvage yard and/or graveyard, I think. And now automobile graveyard is the only thing that's actually defined in Lee County ordinance, so I assume that's what this is for. And it's restricted to automobile graveyard and not a junkyard that I would oppose either. One of the factors that is supposed to be considered if you're looking at any special use permit is whether it will adversely affect the adjoining and surrounding property. And I know that there are a lot of people in that community who feel like that to have an automobile graveyard adjacent to the cemetery and in the middle of a community that has a lot of nice homes will adversely affect the values of those homes. So for that reason, I oppose it and request the board to deny this special use permit. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
My name is Doug McConnell, and I am co-owner of Lee Memorial Gardens. And Gary and I have been good neighbors, but when this happened, I thought I had to come out against it. Got thirteen thousand burials, people who are buried there from every district that you guys represent. And we've got fifty-five hundred other people who have bought plots and would like to be buried there. And we have had plenty of complaints, people stopped by, and they shared their comments with us. And as gentlemen talk about small businesses, we are a small business. We have two full-time employees and two part-time. We contribute to the county in taxes. We contribute in employment, and this is hurting our business. People have come and said, we'll not come there. So what are we gonna do? But the cemetery is set up to where we can turn it over to the state and let the state operate it. But I don't think the people in the county would love that. I don't, I wouldn't want it. But I guess I'm here in opposition to the junkyard or graveyard for cars. But I, I guess that's all I got to say about that. But any questions from you guys? It's, it's a hard business to be in. And the second part of that is we try to do all we can for patriots, but sometimes things are out of our control. We don't like telling people in the county what they can or cannot do. But when zoning was implemented, it was done for the infrastructure of the county so that development could be in certain areas, so things could happen. People would come and buy a nice home. People would build, send their children to school, and Lee County would prosper. But there's always those loopholes and things that does not proceed. But today, I'm in opposition, gentlemen, ladies, and thank you.
Did you, was you on the board when some of these, you was on the IVA board before, wasn't you?
Yes, I was on the board.
Did you have any of these things?
In the nineties when we implemented that, and some of the areas here, those things fell under, they were grandfathered in because, simply because you make a law doesn't mean that you can go back and arrest those people. You know what I mean? Of course, you all know that. But some of those are grandfathered in, and you can't do much about that. Now, the county did pass an ordinance of, you know, junk, not cars, but junk and things like that, and pickles yards and stuff of this nature that complains, and they can go and ask them to clean it up. And I think there's fines involved. I'm not sure about all of that, but hopefully things will help improve. But anyway, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Well, vote right along. Anybody wanna make any movement on this? If, Clint, I'm sorry, I missed her, whatever the case may be. What was, what was the planning commission's?
I don't know if I said baby. So there's four board members present, Joyce Williams, Mr. Williams' mother sits on that board. She abstained from voting. Ultimately, the commission's opinion was that it was not even a special use that was applicable or what Mr. Williams really wanted. So their motion and unanimous between the three voting members was to recommend a denial of this special use and not approve.
So it's not to approve, okay. I just wanted, I didn't know if I just didn't hear you or what the case may be, but I'd plan.
How much motion to check the planning commission's recommendations and deny the request?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the proposed disposition of real property. Lee County Board of Su- Fidels will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six p.m. in the General District Court Room, the Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia. Purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed disposition of real property as follows. Tax parcel twenty-two dash A dash two fifty C, Bob's Branch Watt. Would you like to?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may. This is a public hearing to declare that property as surplus. It was donated by Mr. Roger Adams. This is a parcel that is in the middle of other parcels that we accepted from Mr. Adams back a couple of years ago, and we sold those at auction. So he donated the rest of that property to us, so what I'd like to do is just declare this as surplus so that we could do the same.
I'll make that motion.
Well, since it's a public hearing, I guess we have to ask you first, anybody here on that behalf? Okay, hearing none. Okay, hearing none. Do you wanna move on that?
Yeah, sure. I'll make the motion based on Ms. Records' recommendation.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we got the departmental reports. Anybody got any questions or concerns on the departmental reports? Take five. Okay, got it.
Emergency management, did you there, I don't know if that's gonna be open or closed session, but did we get that declared in time, Josh?
Yes.
Cause they was questioning about it Sunday, Kilgore was, or Mr. Kilgore was, was that?
No.
No, he wasn't questioning about it, it got done on time or not. No, he was saying we needed it in.
We, we got everything.
Yeah, everything got turned in and we done, we was.
They was questioning something about it there after, after, even when we was all staying around congregating and talking.
Well, the cemetery just told everybody that it was taken care of prior to the.
I do have a little more information. That today, Ms. Coleman and FEMA went around and conducted assessments today. We are getting every form of assistance except for what they call IA, which is individual assistance. And that determination has not been made yet, but we are able to get every other assistance that is available through FEMA. They, they went through, they conducted assessments, they looked at all the houses that were damaged by Helene. They don't do trees, they don't do barns, fences, et cetera, that's all agricultural, which is handled through the extension office or the other office, and I can't think of its name right now, but.
A S C S.
Yes. That all runs through them or BDM or somebody else, but FEMA was here today, they went around and done that. There was some people that reported home damage, but there really wasn't any home damage there, it was really agricultural damage. But she went through, went through all of those people that had self-reported today, there's been posts that have been made so people know where to, to try to get assistance, they can self-report, they can come to us, anybody here can, can help them with that. Billy Case kind of the resident expert on how to get that done, so I would recommend seeing her. But other than that, that's, we're, we're getting everything except for right now the individual assistance, which they just haven't made that determination yet.
So to answer that, Mr. Pillion notified me Thursday and said that Lee County was approved for public assistance and they are checking into the individual mail. So that was last Thursday, it's past Thursday.
Yeah, that's what he said, Sunday.
Now, Kilgore talked to myself and Roger, you know, we was talking after the dinner and he said one note for certain paperwork was at, said the governor, Mr. Youngton was breathing down his neck, wanting to leak out his paperwork.
And really needed it in there by Monday and the sheriffs, I think he said the next day, and the sheriffs said he would check into that, wouldn't he?
Correct.
A lot of it, you entered into the BDM side and then it populated into other areas and some of it didn't. So there was, there was a little bit of a lag there, but it should all have been in. Should have, I'll say.
Now, is it, is it paperwork that, is it, I know there's the public can self-report things, but was there, was there other stuff that we didn't know about that was supposed to come from Billy Case himself?
Yeah, there were things, to be honest, there was things that I didn't know about that, that I did a little bit and Billy Case handled most of it, but there, there was some things that we just weren't aware of and we will, we will never get that again. But it did delay some of that paperwork getting in on time, that sort of thing, and some of it was honestly, some inexperienced.
So we're, we're in process and we're, it's.
It's all in there now.
Okay.
Unless there's something, I don't know, all of the data is, is working, actually.
He's pretty adamant about it, wouldn't he, right? Has he come back, he's sort of come back getting parents that it needs to be done?
Is there a way we can reach out to see what they're talking about, especially if we get that cut off?
I can talk to his office and talk to him.
Just, just in case there's lapses and something.
He said the governor had called him Friday, I want to know where Lee County's paperwork was at.
I think the concern was because we didn't show up on the, the, on the list to start with. There was us in Wilmore County that didn't show up on the list from the, from the get-go.
And that, my understanding and speaking to BDM, that was actually a clerical error. Somewhere inside of BDM that caused us not to show in the original report.
And I may be wrong, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that's the reason, but that, that would be the only reason that we wouldn't have shown up because of, or as I know, what Josh, you know, he's got a lot more information I got on, but I'm pretty sure everything's in it, like Robbie said.
When was our last meeting, when we, last time we all kind of found out together about this issue?
That would have been.
That would have been last Monday.
Yes.
Yeah, Monday, when.
We were still dealing.
Represented the purpose.
Yeah.
Well, see, all we looked at that day was agricultural stuff.
Yeah.
And all of that data was, the preliminary data, it's kind of like you enter information in that's really vague and then you have to come back with specifics, so maybe they're looking for something a little more specific. And until I talk to Mr. Pillion's office, I'm really not gonna be able to answer that.
And then the conversation, the other thing about this, the structures, I, I confirm with Rick Thomas, that they said, is that what you had?
Yeah, FEMA was here today.
Okay.
Actually, if you were talking, it was, it was Kilgore that was questioning, not Pillion.
Oh, okay.
And the sheriff, he talked to the sheriff after, during our conversation, the sheriff was gonna follow up on this one, you might.
I will talk to the sheriff and then I'll, I'll find out from there and then try to get ahold of Mr. Kilgore. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you don't care, just send us out a.
An email?
Email, that's whatever, just to let us know what. Okay, any more questions, concerns on those?
Real quick, there, there is a sign that's not been changed on a dump site, still saying closed on Sunday, which side, side was that?
Landfills.
Landfills, causing confusion, can we make sure it's being?
Yes.
Still saying closed at one o'clock or whatever it was before.
Now, the, I'll find out about that, because I know the landfill closes earlier, does it not, Mr. Williams?
I believe the concern was the out at the front gate, that side that was the concern.
Oh, okay, you're talking about out the dumpsters.
Don't worry about it, I can stop there in the morning and get the sign off there. I go by there every day, so yeah, I can, I can.
Well, it needs to have that A P M app on it, right? So there's a, I mean, it really needs to change.
It needs to be changed back to what we voted to put it back to.
The actual hours.
Yeah.
I'd say you take the sign off, it'll fall back into the regular hours.
It'll be between whatever the gates open and close will. For self-explanatory. Okay, any more questions or concerns? Okay, public expression, seems like we done went through a lot of that. Anybody here for public expression? Okay.
Public express.
Okay, hearing none.
Hope you're on the spot, I can't do that.
Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to approval amendments. September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting.
Make motion to approve.
Second. One question, how about our, uh, minutes from the?
We have those mostly done, we didn't get them done in time for the packet, so you all need to get to read them, so I was just gonna present those at the next meeting.
Next, okay, okay, just to be sure.
I just wanted to make sure you all had time to look at them, so I've done that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, refunds, Andrew and Candace Harris.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the Harris couple were gonna build a house, applied for a building permit, paid for that and their plans fell through and they weren't able to do that and they requested a refund of five hundred and fifty-six dollars and one cent. And was asking the board if it would be okay to go ahead and refund that money since they weren't able to complete that.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we got payroll, county administrator reports that payroll warrants have been issued. Approval of dispersments.
Make the motion to pay the bills.
Okay, got a motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next we got delegations.
Mr. Chair, that needs to be tabled until the November meeting, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that he wasn't coming until after this meeting.
Okay.
Make a motion to table till next week.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, finance, we got supplemental appropriations.
Mr. Chair, these are money that just needs to be moved from one area to another where we have funding available that has been made, made available to the state and we just need to get those in the, in the budget.
Okay, motion to approve the supplemental appropriations. Was that total sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-two cents?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we got new business, board appointments, building codes of appeals, and I'd like to table that. I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the Lonsdale Pine Regional Industrial Facilities Authority. Uh, currently we have Mr. Poe on there, I'd make a motion to appoint her.
No, well, I'm already on that board. What I would like to do is get our economic development director appointed to that board.
Oh, in his place, okay. I didn't know we'd ever officially appointed you to that.
He did.
I thought you were just, okay.
Has, she, she won't move?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to. Point, uh.
Let's let him?
Please let him to that.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we got that Upper Tennessee River Round table.
Can you explain to us exactly what, what that consists of, right?
I gave you some information on that during our recess meeting. Basically, this is a board that is put together to ensure the cleanliness and recreational use of the Clint, the Powell and another river that is there, and I cannot remember it off the top of my head.
Holston.
Holston, yeah. And that is their function. Not really had anybody appointed to that in a while, because my understanding is this, the, our appointee now, Little Lambert is not attending any of those and they, they don't meet that often, I think it's once a year.
I guess we need to decide if we're gonna carry through with this or just drop it. Is that much we're adding right now?
Oh, you've actually cut it in here.
So is this a district appointment or a county, one county?
It's a, it's a county appointment.
Can we advertise on Facebook for people that said that would want to be involved in this and see if we get any interest? On the board supervisor page?
Yep.
This board appointment is available, who's interested, throw your name in the hat, might get somebody, might not. If we don't, let's take it off the agenda, because we've looked at it for eight months.
Have come in the form of a motion.
What's it consist of?
I made that motion, yes.
Okay, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you serious?
What's it consist of?
They meet in Kingsport, um, so it would be traveling back and forth to Kingsport and then they would discuss any programs that they would have available to try to improve river access, make sure the water's clean, serviced, that sort of thing. It's a, it's an, it's an outdoor, they, they do some recreational.
Does it pay anything?
It does not.
That's the hard part.
I'm on call twenty-four seven, I keep that in.
I thought that would end that conversation.
Okay, next is texting service.
Mr. Chair, this is an interesting one. I talked to a couple of the treasurer, public commissioner of revenue and others have expressed some interest in a texting service for the county. This actually is a service that is being offered now through the sheriff's department. Would like to maybe open this up to, to use in some other departments. These messages can be used to, in case of closures, tax reminders where we went to the split billing, et cetera. It would also create a database that would be useful to push out any general information deemed appropriate. Looked at a couple of companies on there, actually had some official quotes that were in the seven, eight thousand dollar range. A local company, the Pso Go Sites, which is, Mr. Blackwell?
Blackstone.
Blackstone, I'm sorry, yes, that offered to, to create this for us for five hundred dollars. And it would be able to be used for my office, the treasurer's office, the commissioner's office, and I, I thought that was a real good deal. I know we're in a budget crunch, but that is.
Well, he does a real good job for the sheriff's department.
He, he does, excellent. And, and if we can tag along with that, basically, real quick, if there was a snow event or something and we wanted to blast out some information just for employees or whatever, it's, it's really simple to do. So instead of us sending out about, what, a hundred text messages to everybody, trying to get ahold of everybody here, we could do that in one fell swoop as long as we had our phone.
So you just, you can break it down by different groups?
Yes, you can create groups, you can have, you know, one that's just for employees, you can have one for just tax, you know, tax reminders, that sort of thing. The only, a little bit of hiccup to the whole thing would be the citizens would have to opt into the service because text messaging costs would apply, but most people have unlimited texts now anyways, so it really wouldn't be a, a, you know, a burden to them.
Most of the departments, we, we made that table to have to use them, which is very good. And we got the sheriff's works that's same, like, comes to go there.
But it's gonna be just as good as your cell phone service, correct?
Correct.
Let's talk about this in closed session.
Well, if you didn't have cell service, you wouldn't be worried about getting a text, no way.
Well, I mean, that's a, that's a question.
Probably ninety-nine, a thousand, a hundred people's got, got, can get a text at home. All you have to have, all you have to have is internet and you can have it.
And you can't talk about enclosed session, it's on open session. You can make a motion to table or let go at that route, but, yeah.
I would.
You both have something you want to discuss.
Well, I was just thinking back about the problems that the E D A board was having with this gentleman, if you all remember down there. That's my only concern, you remember what their board.
Have you ever got a sheriff's alert? Everything comes out, comes through that, that's where it comes from, so.
But I mean, that's, that's my only concern, you remember what their concerns was, now that's, that's my, that's my, my.
Well, my, my concern is, is I would rather pay five, five hundred dollars a year to get that information out as I would send eight thousand. To me, that's a no-brainer.
Well, it's, it's already approved in piece of software, because the sheriff's using it, we would, we would just tag along with the sheriff.
I'd make a motion to approve the, and then work out the details on how it gets, you know, split up in departments or however you want to bring it up, I mean, it, it would probably be better to just come from Lee County Courthouse.
That was actually what I was planning on doing and just.
I figured that's what you're gonna do, rather than, rather than try to throw out, you know, this might come from the commissioner's office or whatever, they're all here in the office, so I think it comes from the courthouse.
And who has control over it?
The administrator's office.
So you would run, what they say is when it goes out, where it goes. That's the way it should be.
So if Department A wants a message put out, it would be run through you?
I will be able to give them a login where they can only access the information and we don't want them to be able to, to share in what group. So if something happened, that the, say the treasurer's office wanted to send out a reminder in October for the second group of taxes that's gonna come out.
I, I'd personally rather most of that just come right out of your office, because if not, you're gonna have a chat line.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, it's, honestly, the, the setup, I've seen that, the setup is so simple. is so simple. If, if we got a call and said, hey, we need to blast this out, it's a too many adventure.
Yes.
So, I, that, that wouldn't...
I'm a little bit familiar with it.
Yeah, that wouldn't tax us at all.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the only way to do it, I think. I'd make a motion to approve the, that ought to be like on a yearly contract anyway, huh?
Yes.
Is that in writing, a dollar amount?
I think that's the way we do all our contracts with that.
I'll second it, with, you know, with stipulation that, that...
It all comes through the administrator's office.
It all comes through the administrator's office. Department A wants a message sent out, they bring it to Rodney?
Yes.
His staff.
They got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Leno Westco, Vaco Legislative Meeting.
Mr. Sheriff, we received a request from the Leno Westco Planning District for cost sharing on the Southwest Virginia Legislative Reception in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars. This is an increase, um, but the county has always participated. I actually attended this event, one of the first things that I did when I was here, and it is a real good event. I would actually encourage anybody here that wanted to go to that. It's in Richmond. Uh, there is a lot of people in that room and a lot of, uh, opportunities to, to voice that opinion. I will be going again this year. Um, last year it was twenty-five hundred dollars, and they're asking for thirty-five this year. That was, uh, I asked Mr. Poe about that, and he said that it had been twenty-five hundred dollars for the last fifteen years or so, so.
Yeah, I think we discussed that the other night at our Leno Westco meeting, didn't we? Okay, I'd make a motion to approve.
Say.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Southwest Virginia Regional Jail Authority Second Quarter Twenty Twenty-Five Bill.
Mr. Sheriff, we discussed this a little bit during our recess meeting on, what was it, the second, third of October with the E D A. I did the calculation. Received the bill. The bill totaled five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifteen cents. Per the board's action, I believe it was in the June meeting, uh, one of the recess meetings, you had asked to do the calculation on what the inmate cost was. So, I, I got the averages for July, August, and September, which was a deduction from that bill of sixty-one thousand, sixty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. I didn't, this is part of the budget, so I really didn't need to do a lot. I just wanted to make sure that, um, you were aware the calculation had been done, and it will, will write the check for that for five hundred and six thousand, one twenty-five, thirty-nine.
You need a motion to approve that?
I, I do not as part of the budget, so I can, I, I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware that that had been completed further requests, and that was the way the numbers worked out.
And the sixty-one thousand is the state responsible?
Those are all state responsible inmates. That is an average per month that they give us, you know, so it might have been twenty-nine people on the first and twenty-five people on the thirty-first. It's spaced from the half.
It makes it, that, that really, it really should be, uh, liable for the one year or two, but they wiggle around that.
So, it was just for informational, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that we were working on that.
That's good info. Appreciate that.
Has that been, has that been sent?
No, we will send it this week. I, I just wanted to make sure you all approved those numbers. The way it is in the budget, I, I just wanted you all to see it before we cut that check. We, we'll get it out on the next check round, which will probably be toward the end of the week.
Yeah, I'd say if he didn't send it, we'd heard something about it.
That's what I was wondering if we had any feedback.
There'll, there'll be some feedback.
I didn't, I didn't want it to catch your coat.
Next be Vaco Voting Credentials.
Yeah, uh, on November the twelfth, there is the Vaco meeting at the Omni Hotel, uh, which I will be attending that. Uh, there is a, an option, if anybody would like to go to that, uh, we can, we can still get that done, but under their bylaws, a representative of the board supervisor can designate a non-elected member to cast a vote. If you wanted to, since I am attending that meeting, uh, you could nominate me to vote, or if any of you would love to attend that, uh, I could get you into there. There's a lot of things that Vaco does. I, I keep learning more and more about that little organization. Well, ain't little, but I keep learning more and more about that organization, and the more active you are in that organization, I think you learn a lot about what legislative action is coming and what may need to happen and how to react to it. It's the Virginia Association of Counties.
Well, if none of us wants to go, I can make a motion. We may tee up our vote.
Mr. Ra, does anybody wanna go? It's pretty interesting. Not one of my favorite clubs, but they're...
I enjoyed it. It's, there's a lot of useful information there.
Yeah. I wouldn't care if you see it once, but I scheduled all that.
Okay, nobody else wants to, then Rogers got a motion to make?
I'll say.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we can skip the reports and recommendations of the county attorney. She's out due to one of her youngins. Let's see. Reports and recommendations of the county administrator.
Mr. Sheriff, I'll, I'll be quick. I have several things. Uh, the mini-split in the computer room at Social Services has a refrigerant leak. We keep replacing the refrigerant in there. Um, it costs about two thousand dollars to replace this unit with a new Mitsubishi unit. There are cheaper ones available, but those mini-splits are a little finicky. Um, just kinda wanna know what your pleasure was with that?
Which one was that?
It's, um, this is, I don't have it in the packet. It's...
Right, I mean, but where was it at?
It's in the computer room at D S S, which, that has to be climate-controlled, pretty cool. Um, but it's, it's just one of those little small mini-splits. You know, the thing kind of mounts on the wall and then just runs out to one of those little small units like we have in the clerk's office. That's, that's what it is.
Did we not just put, have all, everything fixed over there last year?
We, we just put a new air conditioning unit in that serves some of the offices. Uh, actually, that's been completed, what, about two months ago. This one has been giving trouble since I've worked here.
It's just dedicated to electronics, right?
That is the only room.
To computer electronics.
That is the only room that it services, and what we're doing now is, is to keep that room cool. Of course, that will transition over to keep it warm, uh, which won't be as big an issue in the wintertime because the computer equipment does keep it some warm, but the problem we've got is we keep putting refrigerant in it, and in six months or so, we'll have spent enough money to put a new unit in.
Reconcile the leak?
They're, according to, to heating and air people, they're finicky to fix.
Good shit, then. So, you got the quote?
I have one. I, I just got the one. I, I wanted to see how much it was. I wanted to see what your pleasure was to, to do this. It was, it kinda fell under what I could actually just order.
What was it?
It was a Mitsubishi, nineteen eighty-seven, I believe, was the quote, but I didn't really wanna...
Nineteen eighty-seven?
Yeah, and I, I just didn't wanna do it without you all. I, there's probably some things that you might tell me later, hey, don't bring this to me, but since we're all kinda new, I figured we might want to make sure that everybody knows what they're doing.
Well, that's kinda interesting, you know, that, that, I mean, 'cause I'd say we just spent a fortune over with heating and air last year, year four last, I guess, and what is it?
Yeah.
I just, I just conserve that word.
Well, I think what's happening is, is that, that building has been there for a while, and the, the heating and air systems that are in there are starting to get to the end of their life. And the one I think maybe you're talking about is that one big unit that services most of the building, which, you don't have to tear the building down to get it in and out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one's been in there about a year and a half, and we just replaced another. If you recall back, uh, that was in August, so.
God.
Bob, you're on that subject. Do you care to tell us about the offices?
Yeah, they have five that is empty right now, and they have three job postings. Actually, if you want me to, I, I had to, we can skip to that a little bit. I've had a couple more meetings with the Department of Social Services. Um, this is an ongoing process. I mean, right now, to be honest, I cannot, I'm trying to reconcile everything back to the numbers that they have and then the numbers that is in the treasurer's office, and then get them to come to some agreement, and I can't, I haven't been able to get there yet. I do have a mound of information that I've got from them. A lot of their trouble, uh, which is understandable to me. Some of their bills, they get paid late, and some of the reasoning behind that is, is they'll get a bill that is not a detailed bill. So, you'll get a bill from A B C provider, and it's basically just one line item you owe them X amount of dollars. And what happens is, is those bills through the, through the C S A or the D S S, they have to be broken down into buckets so we know how to get our money back. So, then you have to go back to the provider and say, hey, I need a detailed invoice, or you put this in there, we're gonna have all this breakdown, which causes a lag in their bills. Um, I have seen some of those. It's a, uh, it's a little bit of an adventure, but I do have a breakdown. If anybody wants to see any of this, I didn't make copies for everybody, but you can see where if a service is done, the local match rate is twenty-eight cents on the dollar. Uh, another service would be twenty-two and forty, twenty-two point four or five cents on the dollar, maybe even eleven point two two cents on the dollar. But all of this has to be broken down into all of these pieces of paper to know how to file for reimbursement, which is, I could see that being a real issue. The problem that I've got right now with them, and, uh, Ms. Brooks couldn't be here tonight because she had a, a personal problem, that, uh, the family issue she had to, to take care of, but we are still working with that. If I walk in down there, they're really good to me, and they'll sit down and open up books. I just haven't really been able to get everything to come to a number that I'm really happy with, saying, okay, this all balance is not happy. And I don't know how long that's gonna take, but we will not stop until we get there.
Uh, it had been discussed before, uh, and one of their problems was, is this falling back to that, is there a lack, lack of timely, uh, billing? I mean, that had been a problem before, wasn't it, that they were slow getting their bills in, and therefore they were slow getting? Has that gotten any better?
It has gotten a little better. Uh, one of the things that I asked them to start doing is, let's say they had the, the invoices and they had a lot of invoices for the month of August, but they didn't have everything that they needed to apply for reimbursement for the month of August. What we're finding out now is, is you can go ahead and apply for what you've got. And so, instead of them maybe doing two or three reimbursement requests through whatever agency they're getting it from, they're waiting until they get this one whole bill. And so, what I've asked them to start doing is, is, is looking at going ahead and requesting funds back and not waiting until they have all of them. If they have to file for sixty percent of it now, go ahead and file for that. And then if they get another thirty percent and then ten percent, go ahead and file for the money. I mean, there's nothing really stopping you unless the agency says they don't want it that way, so. But they have been waiting till they get all of the information and, and get it all done.
Just out of curiosity, you said they had five offices down there and they had three positions?
Yes.
Is all five of those offices well air-conditioned?
Yes. Also, yes.
So, would they, could they be converted to a computer room?
They could. You'd have, it would, it would cost you... Oh, it'd cost you the same amount of money probably at least, because what you'd have to do is just put a patch panel, all of the computer wires run into that one room. So, then what you would do, and this is real tertiary, just looking at it from the outside, you'd have to put a patch panel in that room, run wire to the room that you were gonna put those offices in, and have ground fault, not ground fault, isolated ground, plug-ins installed there, and then physically move the equipment. Yeah, it's, uh, you don't...
So, money-wise, it's not a difference?
It, it probably costs two more.
Okay, solid.
Yeah. I meant, I just wanted you to, those, you don't plug a computer up. If you do at the house, you'll plug a computer up to an outlet, but it's one of those you plug into an isolated ground.
Just trying to cover all the bases.
Gotcha.
That means the computer works.
Oh, five, uh, seven?
Pause it, sound like.
Yes.
Are we gonna put a heating and air system in?
Yes.
Can we not just open the door, let it get climate control with whatever the door next to it is?
Well, that, then you, then you run into more issues. Um, if you have a server that is setting their next, there's a, dust and contaminants will be an issue.
They had, a few years ago, they had a problem with mold in there, I think. Maybe drains from the air conditioning was stopped up or something or other, but a few years ago, I think it was having mold trouble in there, in that thing.
I can't speak to that.
Would not generally the computer server rooms and, uh, something like that, might be to have its own heat and air source anywhere?
Yeah, yeah, well, so you can filter it and, and everything. It makes it more of a green.
It's like the radio system with their towers here. They, each building has their own A C max we ran, that makes it overheating. The radios were, uh, not functioning properly because of the, the heat they had on. So, that's kinda why they have to run separate deals.
Good to know.
Well, I think it'd be cheaper to replace the unit with computers if they overheat.
Broke, right?
I, I would guarantee it.
Make a motion to move forward with that?
I'll say. Well, you said you didn't make a motion.
I, I, it, it's, it's actually, it's, it's under the amount that I can just spend. I, I can spend up to three thousand dollars and get a little under that, so. Um, there is, I, I, I know that most of you sat on the Leno Westco board. Uh, there is some movement on the Western Lee Sewer Project, which includes the county. Of course, being responsible, we talked about this, to obtain and complete easement activity. I received some files from the, from Lane that shows that where that line is gonna run. I had a lot of questions about what they're doing, so I didn't get those files until Friday, so we're still working on that. I'll send you an email out on what we're doing on the Leno Westco stuff, but, or the, the Western Lee Sewer Project, but we, we're having to get a bunch of easements, and I'm not sure exactly why we need to get the easements. Can't, can't just stay on the right of way, so that's a question I want to get from the, I was told I could ask all the questions that I wanted to, and knowing that cost is gonna be quite great, I figured I might wanna be real comfortable with that before we move on. Um, let's see. Uh, school system. We received a counter offer on the property, which includes the tennis courts at Lehigh, and that is a contract thing, and we'd like to talk about that in closed session.
Got it, yep.
Let's see. During our last meeting, in the recess meeting, the BoTech School had offered to come and look at the welding that we wanted to get completed at the transfer station. They did come and look at that, and were excited to try to get that done so that they could get those students to see the skills that they're learning actually work in the real world. Uh, Mr. Conover said that, uh, he would stay there to make sure that everybody is safe, you know, all of the, the, the men and the women that are gonna be there, that that's done in a safe manner, and we're gonna try to get that done this way.
Good to know.
I'm thinking about, are today one thing's gonna do it?
Yeah. Um, I think, I think it's tomorrow, is what I'm thinking. Um, the town of Beatty Gap, I, I gave each of you a copy of a letter where Mr. Skidmore had sent us a letter requesting some financial assistance to purchase a trailer for a new U T V that they had purchased under a grant. So, I didn't know if you wanted to try to take any action on that letter if you get a chance to read that, but basically, they got that, that U T V. They've actually used it once, I think, already. Is that true, Mr. Planner?
Yeah.
And, uh, they don't have a real good way to haul that thing around, so they were looking for some, some assistance. I think the trailer was fifty-six hundred dollar range that they were looking to get for that.
Fifty-eight ninety-five?
And, you know, I don't know if they, they'll, you know, get that out.
Is it a trailer to haul this U T V, or is it a trailer to transport whatever behind the U T V?
It's a trailer to haul the actual unit itself. They have one trailer, this, and that sixty-six is already preloaded, and they, I guess they're wanting to...
They have one trailer, the sixty-six is already preloaded and they, I guess they're wanting another trailer to put this one on, so they have three total, three, three vehicles, eighteen U T Vs total.
Can they not use the one they moved the excavator with?
According to the letter, there is.
I think it's, they're wanting something where it's loaded and ready to go in case, I mean, it's an emergency vehicle, so. Using another trailer sitting out there, they got a hunting trailer down, hooking it up and go load up.
They keep one, like I said, they keep one sixty-six already on, a trailer in the department behind the truck they had to take off and go with. I guess they're wanting to have two available like that, I guess.
Can we discuss this in closed session under public funds?
Probably not. The only other thing I have for, Mr. Shoemaker, we have a potential tourism committee board appointment that will come up, so if you can think about that for the tourism board. And that's all I've got. That was enough there.
Okay, reports and recommendations of the board? You think I have anything, man?
We've talked a lot about different boards and appointments, no motion, just a little bit of discussion, I want to bring it up, maybe put it on the next agendas. People that we appoint to different boards and, and we hire to do certain jobs, if they show up to do that job, they earn their money. And if they don't, I'm not sure that we need to continue to pay them. Just like on the Leno Westco board, if we're not there, I miss one myself, was out of town, didn't work, he was out last week, we don't get paid.
We do not pay board members when they're not attendance.
I was told that we do.
I was, I was told that we don't, because I actually specifically asked that question when.
I don't think we're supposed to.
We are not supposed to, if they do not attend, we are not. I will verify that for you and I will send an email out to everybody, but now they, I, I specifically asked that question of Ms. Hughes and she said, if they're not in attendance, we don't pay.
How are we aware whether they attend some of these meetings?
They, they send us.
Quite often, from what I've heard.
Yeah, they, they send us information on their attendance.
And your attendance, too.
Because not every board pays.
Right.
So just the ones that pay, we get, we get attendance, like for the one that we get from the building inspector's office, you know, those, they give us the attendance records. And they actually give us a check request for those attendance.
Only other thing I'd say is we want me to get into election, just wanna encourage everybody to get out and vote.
For sure.
No, I'm joking, yes, get out and vote, the county, the economy needs growth and, Johnny.
I still thank you all for calling, checking on me, step by getting my family there, lost my father, huh? Guess I could have later, but have a good time, gee, I guess. Appreciate y'all coming over to the ceremony.
I have loved it.
Make a motion, we're going to close session. Two point two thirty-seven, Lee, eleven, eight one, one one, that personnel. Two point two thirty-seven, eleven, eight six, best of the fund.
Say.
And contract.
Motion in second, all in favor? Any opposed?